Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Tonight, we are starting over. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Brandywine School District Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, July 17th, 2023. We are live in the Brandywine High School Auditorium, also via Zoom broadcast. Ms. Harris, may I please have a roll call? Here.
President.
Here.
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 Thank you, Ms. Harris. This time, I would like to ask Ms. Karen Gordon to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the class of United States and Americans through the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and
This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Approve, uh, motion, Ms. Gordon, second, Mr. Heller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Tonight, we'll start off our special presentations in recognition with some Dreambox winners.
Good evening. I am Michelle Holly. I serve as the Supervisor for Math, Science, and Gifted Services for the school district, and I am very excited to be here tonight to present our district-level Dreambox Award winners. Dreambox is an online game-based math program that we provide to all students in the district in grades K to eight. It's a great tool for independent practice and helping them practice their math in meaningful ways, but that are in ways that are fun as well. Every student gets a personalized pathway, so part of our goal with providing this competition each spring is to just get students in there and playing because it will automatically adjust to their needs. So tonight, we recognize the accomplishments of the top performer at each grade level across the district. In total, these students have completed over 2,700 lessons digitally in Dreambox just during the month of May. As I call your name.
Yeah.
As I call your name, please come up front to get your award, and then we're going to stand and take a picture with everybody before we head to the lobby. So for grade K from Mount Pleasant Elementary School, we have Valerie Westfall, and she is not in the auditorium tonight. Okay, grade one at Hamby, Srini Vasan Mukhil. Come on down. Okay, in grade two, also from Hamby Elementary School, Danish Manukonda. Okay, not here tonight. Grade three at Claymont, Arya Terefter. Arya completed an astonishing 552 lessons during the month. Also from Claymont in grade four, Christopher Johnson. In grade five from Lombardi, Monica Q. Not in the auditorium, okay. Grade six from Tally Middle School, Mid Hakim. Is not in the auditorium, okay. Grade seven from PS Dupont, Kayon Scott. And grade eight, also from PS Dupont, Naomi Cooper. She's not here. Students, we would like for you to come down and gather in the lobby. Oh, we're still working on. Do we have another winner? Come on up.
It finished, finished.
And this is Danish from Hamby in second grade. Congratulations. All right. Thank you very much. This represents a lot of hard work, and we appreciate your accomplishments.
Congratulations.
I just want to say congratulations to the students. You did a great job, and thank you to the parents for supporting them and instilling a love of education and doing extra work outside of school will always serve you well. So I hope you continue with Dreambox next year and ask one small favor: to find a friend that didn't do Dreambox this year and bring them on your journey next year. Can you do that? Thank you very much. And next up, we'll have a overview of our administrative retreat presented by Dr. Lawson and Mr. Rivera.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Scrobuck, Mr. Heller, Superintendent Holer, and our wonderful members of the board, as well as our audience. We're here this morning to share a little bit about our administrative retreat that occurred last week. This is just a broad overview. It was four very intense, focused days of work by all of our administrators, inclusive of district office administrators, building administrators, to include principals, assistant principals, and our deans of students. Next slide. So all of the work that we did over the course of four days aligns with our district's success plan. If you aren't familiar with the district's success plan, it is posted on the website. We have four goals. We're going to go through a high level of what we did each day aligned with each of those goals, but once the district's success plan was finished, each of our schools was tasked with coming up with their own school continuous improvement plans, and we call them continuous improvement plans because that's exactly what we're asking our schools to do: continuously improve and grow and get better in the work that we do. Goal one is around high-impact instruction, of course, right? That's why we're here. We're educators to educate our children. So we're making some curricular shifts going into next year. We're really looking at our data and taking a deeper look in terms of what are the achievement gaps, the learning gaps that students have experienced since COVID, and what do we need to do with our high-quality instructional materials? And remember, that was legislation that was passed last year in Delaware that we must have high-quality instructional materials in front of our students. So we'll be making those curricular shifts. We're adding curriculum in the area of ELA, thanks to the work of Tracy Salikman and the teachers that she asked to be part of that committee for ninth and 10th grade. We are adopting a curricular package that we believe aligns very well with the standards. We talked a lot last week about solid, solid teaching practices. We need to make sure that our administrators are up on the latest teaching practices so that when they go into classrooms to observe teachers and they apply the Delaware Teacher Growth Support System, which is our new evaluation system, that they will be able to provide our teachers with actionable feedback, right? That they will be able to let the teacher know this was your area of strength, this was fantastic, what about this, and what were you thinking as it relates to this, and how we can continuously grow and improve our educators as well. The other thing that we talked about in relation to this goal was calibration among our administrative teams. Teachers need to know what to expect when we're coming into classrooms. It's not a secret, it's not a gotcha. It really is about growing our teachers and making sure that they are providing the best to all of our students.
Good evening. Throughout the retreat, we also focused on goal two: creating a climate and culture that results in a positive learning environment in which all students feel safe and feel a sense of belonging. We emphasized the importance of developing MTSS systems to ensure the desired building culture is established from the very first day of school. It's critical that the desired student behavior is taught, reviewed, and enforced in order for all of our students to reach their learning targets. This work always begins with developing strong relationships with students. We modeled relationship-building activities as well as examples of classroom collaborative structures. Our superintendent led a session review on safety and security protocols. He highlighted a number of safety initiatives that BSD has implemented, put in our district well ahead of other districts in the state. We conducted a safety tabletop exercise practicing our emergency responsiveness during a crisis. School administrative teams also reviewed the appropriate application of the Student Code of Conduct through sample scenarios. Administrators calibrated their responses with other administrators from their own building, as well as other district administrators. Dr. Lawson led a session updating administrators on a number of the new laws passed this legislative session around student discipline and social-emotional learning. Administrators had input on how we can best implement these requirements. We were reminded how lucky we are to have a number of influential people in this district, like Dr. Lawson, who helped push or prevent legislative language at the state level. And lastly, we invited Equity &amp; Beyond to lead a session on continued development of our leadership skills, as they have done so with the school board earlier this year. And talking about All-Stars, our very own Ms. Delitha McIntyre shined in her training around goal three, talent management. Administrators walked away better understanding policy by digging into our very own board policies. Administrators were trained on how to lead investigations and how they can best support their staff through the evaluation process. Administrators also received the state's required trainings on Title IX discrimination and sexual harassment. We also discussed the district and schools' recruitment and retention practices, considering what approaches would result in hiring and keeping our excellent educators while other districts across the country are struggling to fill their positions.
And then bringing it home, day four and goal four, we talked about operational excellence. Jill Floray, our new CFO, did a wonderful job of presenting budgets, not only the district budget, but building budgets and all of the do's and don'ts around purchases. The way that she would be able to pull state law and regulation right off the top of her head was impressive. One huge piece this year is that she is allowing our schools to carry over 15% of funds from year to year so that they can make very strategic decisions about how to use their building budgets. Ms. Jones Davis presented on family and community partnerships and how we, as individual buildings and schools, and also as a district, how we can strategically partner with many organizations, private in the community, in order to better support our young people in the buildings and our staff as well. Ms. Floray also provided a school funding overview, both the state of Delaware landscape and Brandywine School District's landscape, taking us all the way back to our successful referendum in 2016, showing us exactly how we got to be where we are and preparing us for our 2024 Ask to the Community. And then John Reed, of course, did a fabulous job explaining our capital improvement needs in the Brandywine School District, always with a little bit of humor, but with excellent history. And you want to talk about someone that can rattle statistics off the top of their head, hang around John Reed for a while. It was just an excellent day, and we are primed and ready for our 2024 Ask referendum. And that is it. Does the board have any questions for us in relation to our work last week?
Just one small question. You mentioned the new assessment system. If I recall, we were a pilot for that. Is that, are we still in the pilot phase, or is that fully transitioned?
Excellent question. We did pilot all last year. We are so thankful that Delithia came forward and said, "I think we should do this." We believe everyone was more relaxed. Our teachers were relaxed. We were learning right alongside of them. I think we're primed and ready to go, better positioned than other districts, but we start full throttle for real this year. The pilot was just one year.
Appreciate the presentation. I just wanted to add that I had the opportunity to speak with more than one attendee of the admin retreat, and kind of what's not covered in your presentation is that the response seemed to be that the vibe was just different this year. Very positive, very engaging, a lot of energy. We have a lot of new faces and a lot of new positions, and I was very proud and grateful to hear that there's a lot of positive energy and that the retreat was so well-received and all this energy is going into the start of the new year. So thank you for everyone that participated in.
Thank you. Funny that you say that. We, I pulled a statistic, and it wasn't even new to their position, but four new principals, six new APs, and seven new deans, completely new. But yes, we had some movement too. So you're right, it was a lot of team building to get our new school teams gelled and together. It was a, it was a great time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And then next up, we have high school ELA curriculum update. Dr. Coach, Ms. Salikman.
Good evening, President Scrobuck, Vice President Heller, board members, Superintendent Holer. For the last year and a half, we've been providing regular updates through board meetings, Friday packets, on our progress for our grades nine through 10 ELA adoption. We are happy to announce that we have made a selection and will be sharing our adoption story tonight, but rather than me tell this story, I'd like to hand it off to the folks who participated in this journey firsthand.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Salikman, and I am the Secondary Literacy Coordinator for the district.
My name is Elizabeth Tedrick, and I teach at Mount Pleasant High School.
And I'm Robin Houghton, and I am the ELA Department Chair at Mount Pleasant.
Okay, so as you know, we have worked through a year-long process of learning about HQIM, creating a vision and criteria, reviewing and piloting, and getting support from the Department of Education. So tonight, what we're going to do is just kind of walk you through our journey briefly. So I wanted to start off with something that Dr. Lawson already referenced tonight, which is that the Delaware Department of Education started this careful look at HQIM and its impact on student learning back in 2017. And really, what they did was they charged LEAs with making sure that they were closely evaluating and making sure that we had instructional materials in front of our students that were of high quality. So that's where we started it off, and that would include, of course, all tiers of education. So through the support from the Delaware Department's competitive, the Delaware Department of, of Education's Competitive RPL, that's the Reimagining Professional Learning Grant, we have received, we received funding to support the challenging work of reviewing and adopting new curriculum using best practices such as vision-setting and criteria development. In addition, it has allowed us to identify areas for teacher professional learning. There's lots of support that you see up here that the state has been trying to provide different LEAs, and I just wanted to point out, too, that were super important to me. One is that Curriculum Support Guide, which has been a little bit of a Bible for me, taking you all the way through the process from beginning to end with really great comprehensive questions to ask along the way. And then the other one is the, the Professional Learning Partners Guide. This was important for us in selecting supports. So as, next slide, as part Yes, as part of the grant we received from the Department of Education to support HQIM, we enlisted a third-party objective support from TNTP to assist us in the high school review process. We selected TNTP because they are an approved DOE vendor from that guide. They are a national nonprofit that is focused on not only ensuring great teaching in every classroom, but also, more important to me, is that they have been really working hard to build capacity in our staff so that, moving forward, we, we can grow and we can teach each other. Okay, so this is a list of the amazing, the amazing staff that we had who are represented from each building, as you can see, and there is also Special Education and MLL representatives. I also would like to thank David Walls, Coordinator of Secondary Special Education, and Dr. Sue Haley Solano, Coordinator of Multilingual Learners, for taking time to do a preliminary review of all of our curricula through the lens of effective supports for teachers, for our diverse learners. So our timeline, actually, we were able to stick to it, which was very exciting. The High School Curriculum Committee worked systematically and thoughtfully through a curriculum review process using steps recommended by both Delaware Department of Education, BSD, and our TNTP partner. We followed the timeline you see here, and as I said, we're able to pretty much stay on track.
Sorry to say, I think I can read it off of there, but I'm not sure. So I'm going to share the criteria with you, and then Liz, who's a pro at reading this vision, is going to read it to you. So the criteria, and these were set by the teachers, along with the admin on the staff, and having a discussion, so it was a process that we went through to narrow it down. And the things that we said were non-negotiables. We're building knowledge of self and others through diverse, high-quality texts, including novel options, multiple writing and research opportunities, evidence-based discussion and cali- collaboration, supports for all students, supports for all students, usability, and a depth and breadth of assessments, including having a self-assessment reflective section for students as well as teachers.
I feel like it's sort of like, how many English teachers does it take to change a light bulb when we all draft one statement in one room, all these English teachers? So we finally came up with BSD, High School ELA Teachers Will Provide High-Quality Instruction Grounded in Literacy Research That Will Support Students Becoming Engaged Learners. Students Will Interact With Rigorous, Diverse Grade-Level Texts and Tasks To Build Knowledge, Analyze Perspectives, Appreciate Literature, And See Themselves In Others. Our Students Will Regularly Engage In Meaningful Critical Thinking And Inclusive Collegial Discussions. Students Will Write Routinely For A Variety Of Purposes And Audiences To Advance Their Communication Skills And To Develop Self-Efficacy In Service Of Becoming Productive Citizens.
And we read that every time, before every meeting. Oh, no, it's not. Sorry. As part of the review process, we just wanted to share that the committee gathered stakeholder feedback at different points along the way throughout the year. As you can see, we gathered teacher, parent, caregiver, student, and school administrative feedback, and we're just, we're going to touch on a few of these in, in some slides that are coming up.
All right, so the first thing that we're going to talk about is that after we worked as, to pilot, and there were pilot, people piloting in every building across the district, we did a survey, I guess is what we'll call a survey, and these were the things that we came up with that were the strengths of the My Perspectives Program, which we wanted to go with, and we eventually did. And that was the rigor of the unit tasks and assessments. So we would be able to use these with all students in all programs and have the same materials available to everyone, and everyone be exposed to the same levels of rigor. Planning Supports For Teachers Has A Depth Of Materials That Can Be Used And Suggestions For When And How They Should Be Used. And Then Supports For Diverse Learners. It has a great program. In my particular classroom, I had students whose home language was not English, and they were very different languages. I had a young man here from the Ukraine with me for this year, and he was able to, using the program, click a button and see what he needed to see, and then he would go back to English, and it made it much more effective for him, and I look forward to using that again in the future.
So as Tracy mentioned a few slides ago, the curriculum committee and the pilot teachers are somewhat different, so all teachers had the, were invited to attempt the curriculum, and these were the people that went through with that pilot. So we had ninth and 10th grade teams and one 12th grade teacher, Katie Winters at Brandywine, as well as the MLL and Special Education teachers.
So we were able to, as I said, adhere to that high line, to that timeline, and that in, the experiences that we were able to share and get from teachers was not, I'm sorry, was not just teachers, but also our students. So in order to better understand their experience with the pilot and their ELA experience in general, TNTP and BSD conducted, and actually, me, conducted student focus groups using an empathy protocol adapted from TNTP's opportunity myth to help inform our implementation for the next year. So our student focus groups included representation from all three high schools and all levels of classes.
So these were some quotes from students when Tracy came and, and asked for feedback about the curriculum, and they're really positive, and we're just going to read through some of them. So regarding accessing content outside the typical ELA classroom, students have said, "We are learning about the psychology behind fear," which was one of the units, "and it's better than just learning to write a claim. It was cool to learn about older texts rather than just ours now, so we can learn more about what happened in the past. Some of the stuff from Poe, Edgar Allan Poe, is different from today and is different from how we would talk with our kids and families. It gets me out of my comfort zone and out of what I am used to." So that harkens back to our vision statement about seeing yourself in others and experiencing the world beyond yourself. Access to challenge and rigor, it is more challenging. It makes you go in-depth and have to go back to the text to really answer properly and more two-part questions, and then giving evidence for how we think and usability. "I like the vocabulary, and you can write your notes, or we don't understand that one word, the definition's right there," Ms. Houghton was saying with her particular student, "and also, I agree because the books have all the things prepared. It is helpful to have it at home if I need it and not need the book. It is good to write in the book." And just looking more closely at quotes, number two and three, we'll call them. In my own experience in the classroom, we were talking about a story written by an Argentinian author, and it was called "House Taken Over," and it's really sophisticated. There's a lot of complex literary elements, like magical realism, and we started talking about, "It's a ghost story. Well, who's taken over the house?" And the students, "I don't know, and you're not wrong. Like, this is a place where that answer is not wrong. You don't know because the author made it ambiguous on purpose. It is vague on purpose, and we have these conversations. Well, what's ambiguity, and why did the author do this?" And it was just really powerful and rewarding to have that experience because of the high-quality instructional materials in front of us, that it yielded such a rich opportunity to engage in that deep-level learning that would probably not have arisen with, with other material. And it's not to say that teachers don't know how to select these things. It saves us the time from having to go through all of that. So I, it just was a relief, and it was really cool to see it as we were doing it, the success that it was yielding in the classroom.
And this slide is showing you how the pilot teachers compared. HMH was the other pilot that we did and My Perspectives on each of our evaluation criteria. And as you can see, the teachers, both curricula were generally positive. As a matter of fact, we went into the final days unsure which way we would end up going. But at the end of the day, we did rate My Perspectives higher in all areas. I guess equal and one. And we decided that it more was stronger in terms of these five career and fitting with our ELA vision that we chose. I just, I'm not going to take as much time, I just want to share that along with Liz. The teachers' experiences in my building anyway, that I was talking to regularly. Of having these materials was really different for them. In that we really focused on the how we were going to deliver it, making choices about the specific kids in my classroom. Rather than creating materials. And that was something that was very rewarding for us as a department. And we're really excited to build on that this year going forward.
It was 100% unanimous. From my perspective, yes.
Okay, so we're at the close here and I just wanted to share some of our next steps. We have three buckets here during our, so we have our teacher professional learning, which is is the first bucket. During our June professional development, all ninth and 10th grade ELA teachers took part in a curriculum training. Provided by the publisher in order to orient teachers to the materials. Look at the architecture overall, as well as at the lesson level. This week, I'm running a professional learning session to work with teachers to develop a scope and sequence for the year. Unpack units and identify common assessments to prioritize. Throughout the year, we will use any, if we have any provided PD days. As well as grade-level PLC time across the district to support planning with the new materials. As well as focusing instruction on each school's instructional focus area. The second bucket is leader professional learning. Leader professional learning will be provided monthly for our content admin. To better understand the materials and what they're seeing in the classrooms, especially as they relate to the new evaluation system, the DTGSS. As well again, as their connection to the school's instructional goals. And then finally, the last bucket is the quarterly progress monitoring. And we will be doing that monitoring throughout classroom visits. Using analysis of student work and feedback from stakeholders throughout the year as we did in middle school.
I have one question, just to clarify, it was the same group of teachers that evaluated both of the options, is that correct?
Yes.
And then more of a general question, when we select new curriculum, is there a minimum length of time that we commit to that curriculum?
So there, I mean, it's five to six years usually. And that's, and that would be because it, number one, it does take about three years to actually get, you know, to actually real. I don't want to say start seeing results, but it's, you know, it takes a lot of learning. And so, yeah, usually it's five to six years.
I have a comment and a couple of questions. First of all, this presentation and what you've given us and just the thoughtfulness behind. Quite frankly, your, your piloting of the both of the programs here is actually very, very excellent. So congratulations.
Thank you.
My question is that, so with this, I know that there's a lot of digital resources, which is awesome. Will we also have print books, will we have books like a classroom set?
Yeah, so all teachers will have a teacher, a hardback teacher edition. What we are going to do is the same thing we did with middle school, which is have consumables for students. And they will get them every year. And so that gives teachers the choice of how they're going to use. Whether I've seen in middle school, they use, teachers go back and forth using the online platform. Especially it's helpful at home when, when kids are at home or they're sick. Or, or whether they choose to use it in the classroom or they can use the hard copies.
Wonderful, and then also I see, will we, will the district also then be getting the turn it in as well?
I'm sorry.
Will the turn it in, will that also?
Oh, yes, actually, so Turn It In is actually embedded in the curriculum. So when they do the writing, it's, it's a part of the learning that teachers are going to have to do within the curriculum. So a lot of them know how to use Turn It In already, but, but I don't know if that may look a little bit different online on the, on the curriculum itself, the platform.
That's great, hopefully Turn It In will have an AI checker too as well.
Ms. Selkman, just for the sake of the audience that's listening, can you explain what Turn It In is?
Yeah, it's a, it, well, it's actually, it's a checker for resources. So you're checking for plagiarism, basically. And it's, the teachers have used it for years now at the high school, not so much at the middle school. But it also is now, they're developing the AI piece to look for AI. It's not, yes, of course, none of it's 100% accurate at this point, but yeah, it's a plagiarism checker.
So the old cut and paste, turn it in is, is going to be caught. And will ensure that kids are producing authentic writing pieces.
I just want to say, we don't use it as a got-to, we use it as a teachable moment. So we do that with the kids, they can see an originality report. And it'll say this much of it is not original or this much of it appears to be AI assisted. We can then coach the kids and give them a chance to rewrite or help them figure out how that happened. And then that usually means the next time they know not, and they work around whatever they did the first time. So I found it very effective last year, even as the AI was just coming out. And kids were just discovering it, it led to some really deep conversations. About the appropriateness and how and when to use AI when it could be appropriate. And that having it write your paper was not.
Just wanted to acknowledge, you know, I know we've seen it over the last couple of years. You know, specifically with curriculum, our new curriculum, the assembling of stakeholder groups to evaluate and get different input. And I know, you know, the district has done that with, you know. Other areas of the district, but specifically with curriculum. So I appreciate the district for doing that and all the teachers that participated in it. And I think, you know, it just speaks to the direction we're going in trying to, you know. Build a consensus, generate that buy-in and that will help with the implementation, which will be, you know. Translate to the success in the students and learning the material if the teachers enjoy teaching it and see the big picture. So thank you, everyone that participated.
Thank you.
Now lead us into our superintendent's report, Mr. Holder.
President Scrobott, Vice President Heller, members of the board and audience members. Sora is a digital library that students have access to from their class link portal. They can choose to digitally check out books, novels, magazines and more. Elementary students in Brandywine were challenged to read a hundred or more minutes a week. Via our Sora reading platform. You can see listed on that slide, the winners. Either was an incentive or the greatest amount of texts being read at our buildings. And we're thrilled to see the participation of our students. You saw earlier this evening, the participation in our math challenge. Here's a summer reading challenge initiative that our kids really grabbed onto. Each week, students that meet the challenge requirements were entered into a virtual raffle with one winner per school drawn weekly. At the end of the challenge, all students who read at least 100 minutes all four weeks of the challenge were entered to win the grand prize. A Nintendo Switch Lite. Not sure what that is, but it sounds really wonderful. Congratulations to the week's winners by school as shown on these slides. The grand prize winner was Lindsay from Claymont Elementary, who read over 27 hours so far this summer. Roughly 200 students participated in the challenge this summer. Accessing 2,402 books and reading a total of 875 hours. Very similar to your comment, after the math challenge, students were acknowledged, Mr. Scrobott. Everything the students do during the summer will come back to pay off in the academic year next year. So congratulations to those students. Much thanks to the parents for supporting them in those efforts. In an effort to increase attendance with a camp-like feel. We have planned various activities with outside organizations for participating students in our BSD summer programs. Recently, for instance, Winneton Museum came out to our summer academy with their onsite field trip called Once Upon a Playtime. Students were introduced to the concepts of childhood and leisure activities from long ago. Through toys, games, such as alphabet gymnastics, Jacob's ladder, tops, buzzsaw and more. This included demonstrations from the museum staff and time for students to have hands-on play. Learning doesn't end after the final bell on the last day of school. This summer BSD is pleased to offer the eighth grade summer bridge program for identified eighth grade students. This program provides rising freshmen in BSD opportunities to learn and receive accelerated services. To ensure readiness in English Language Arts, algebra and social emotional enrichment. Eighth grade summer bridge program also hosts guest speakers from our three high schools and district office. To discuss transitional topics such as graduation requirements, extracurricular activities, SAT prep, study skills and more. The Brandywine School District Food Truck, BrandyDine, is again delivering fresh and healthy meals through the summer. Food service program where all children age 18 and younger are able to receive meals at no cost. Fresh food is prepared aboard the BrandyDine. Offerings challenge daily, offerings change daily and include freshly baked pizzas. Grilled items such as paninis and burgers, sandwiches, salads and fresh fruit and vegetables. Thank you to our school nutrition team and supervisor Colleen Carter for, again. Amazing efforts at keeping our kids fed year-round. The district is once again hosting our summer fine arts camp program from July 10th through the 27th. The camp has 171 registrations for eight different art experiences this summer. Weekly camps run Monday through Thursday from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Mount Pleasant High School and Piestopot Middle. And we also include breakfast and lunch. Week one featured an intermediate jazz ensemble camp taught by Springer's Robert Baroneo. Students retreated to master classes from several local jazz artists. And performed a completely improvised jazz concert on the final day. Beginning fiddle music, taught by elementary strings teacher Jean Marie Braddock. Taught elementary students traditional fiddle techniques and performed a concert on the final day. Music and art genres through the years, taught by Megan Stock and Amanda Fritz. Introduced students to musical genres and the artists behind them. At the end of the week, their artwork was presented in a gallery walk pop-up exhibit. Drawing basic anatomy and proportion was taught by Mr. Mark Syrah. And had students study the many facets of art, including creation, drawing in reverse. Exploration of pastels and charcoal and more. Week two, which runs the 17th today through the 20th, has two camps currently in progress. The Gotta Be Jazz Elementary Musical taught by Amanda O'Connor and Amanda Fritz is now in its second week. The elementary students will learn basic acting, singing and history of jazz. Which they will use to perform a complete musical in only eight days. Mark Syrah returns for a second week to teach a painting class exploring five-layer mixed media. Acrylic landscape painting, watercolor, airbrush and more. The final week, July 24th through the 27th, has a multimedia art course again taught by Mr. Syrah. Exploring mechanized mental mini sculptures, spray booths and stenciling. The BSD Summer Fine Arts Camp is the best deal in town for full-day, deep and enriching educational experience. In the visual and performing arts. I'd like to thank and congratulate Dr. Dominic Pizzano, who's in the audience this evening. Who oversees and helped do all the planning and pull off the summer fine arts. Now, two years in a row after several-year hiatus. Thank you for your work behind the scenes, Dr. Pizzano. In my June report to the board, I shared this photo of Ford Elementary's ribbon cutting ceremony for their new adaptive playground. While a real feel-good story, it does pale in comparison to the latest big news coming out of Forward. This past week, we received an email from the president and CEO of Special Olympics Delaware that read. Congratulations. On behalf of the Special Olympics Delaware, we are honored to declare Forward Elementary School an official. Special Olympics Delaware Unified Champion Banner School for the 2022-23 school year. Under your leadership, this email was to Diana Golden, principal. The Forward Elementary School staff and students have demonstrated their commitment to inclusion. Through unified sports, youth leadership opportunities for students with and without disabilities. And a whole school engagement. Touched as congratulatory letter from the president and CEO of Special Olympics Delaware. Your banner will be sent out in a few months. All we need from you is to tell us how you would like your school's name to appear on the banner. Once again, congratulations on earning the 2022-23 Delaware State Unified Champion School banner. Thank you for all your school does to promote inclusion in Delaware. So don't get me wrong, I very much appreciate the steps of ensuring our physical structures are inclusive. But physical changes don't hold a candle to the witnessing. The tangible change of mindsets, beliefs and actions. Actions not for compliance sake, but genuine and sincere. Deliberate and spontaneous, their value statements. How many times have we said that our children actually teach us more often than we realize? And that we, as adults, would be better off if we just stopped, listened, watched and learned. It's great to have an adaptive playground. It's amazing to have students who understand and value each other for the differences they have. And are accepting the law. In the past, we've, we've caught it on the chin as other districts have across the nation. Because we said that we were serious about our efforts in diversity, equity and inclusion. Here is an excellent example of what a focus on equity, inclusion and diversity looks like. And the results that we want to see, again, not the adaptive playground. But the change of heart, the attitude and the mindset amongst our children and our staff that all kids matter. That, that's at the root of what we want when we talk about diversity, equity and inclusion. Those pictures are powerful. And I think alongside the CEO of Special Olympics, I think Diana Golden. And Assistant Principal Angela Williams, the entire staff, but mainly the students and the parents of Forward on such an amazing accomplishment. With that, we are going to end the presentation tonight with a sizzle video for July. Enjoy. With that, we are going to end the presentation tonight with a sizzle video for July. Enjoy.
With this, remember how we counted the body? We went one, two, three.
Remember, we're not allowed to put in the tape on these.
Right. Because that's the only way we're still looking. So I don't think it's that one.
This morning, you guys heard from a professional engineer talking about a stream engineering. So this afternoon, I thought we'd like to talk about like high school engineering in the Brandywine School District.
You may have noticed a familiar face, one that's been before us several times in the last few months, a member of the BSD National Award-winning Samsung Solve for Tomorrow team. And to see a student presenting to our students, that's not new. That's something that Brandywine has been doing in its STEM camps for the past seven or eight years as our young STEM engineers look at role models who are still in high school in the district, and they encourage and support. What better role model can there be? So kudos again to our team that planned our summer programming, Dr. Kutch, Nicole Warner, Rebecca Shakowsky, and a slew of others. Thank you, as always, for your attention to offering neat, innovative opportunities for kids to expand their learning as well as hone up on some skills for next year. With that, Mr. President, I end my presentation. Proud to be BSD.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Holer. Any comments or questions from the board? Fantastic. I do not have any public comment cards. Do anybody via Zoom? Nobody via Zoom this evening? That'll lead us into Board Member Liaison Reports and Updates, starting with Mr. Ackerman, DSBA Executive Board.
The Executive Board has not met since our last meeting, but just a reminder to board members, the DSBA Annual Meeting and Retirement Celebration for Dr. Marinucci will be August fifth at the Dr. at Marinucci's farm, I believe it's in Harrington. And you should have an email. If you don't, just drop me a line and I'll get the information to you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Ms. Gordon, any DSBA legislative updates?
Legislative Committee obviously has not met this past month either, and our next meeting is supposedly October fourth.
Fourth, fantastic. District Finance Committee has not met. Well, we met on July tenth, which was the day before our special board meeting, July eleventh, so no updates since then. That meeting can be found on our district webpage under Board Docs for public consumption. Our next meeting is scheduled for August sixteenth at five PM. Mount Pleasant Elementary and via Zoom will be posted on our website. Maintenance Committee, Mr. Heller?
I was on vacation for that meeting after it was rescheduled. Do you have notes?
I do not have notes on that. I will check and follow up with the board this week. Parent Citizen Advisory Committee, Reverend Perry?
We are actually recessed until the fall.
We are recessed. I'll touch base with you to make sure that we are, touch base with the schools to, I know a meeting or two ago, we talked about generating more interest from the parent representatives, so we'll continue to work on that.
Mr. Scrobot, if I could add, that was a point brought out by Ms. Lavina Jones Davis at our admin retreat, already setting the stage for buildings to have representation in order for us to revitalize and kick off the Parent Citizens Advisory Committee early this year, most likely October.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Pigeon is not here. No update for Parents Council, Students with Disabilities, Wilmington Learning Collaborative. Reverend Perry, I know you have a item. Do you want to give any update now or save it for the new business item?
I can save it for the new business item.
Fantastic. Ninety-one-seven WMPH, our next meeting is scheduled for July twenty-fourth, six PM via Zoom. That will be posted on our website as well. Any additional board members' reports?
Yes, Mr. Scrobot, I do have an additional report, if I may.
Sure.
So this past weekend, I was invited to attend the API Coalition Summit in Washington, DC, which is made up of Asian-American Pacific Islander elected officials in the Northeast and Mid-Atlantic States. We heard a welcome address from Vice President Kamala Harris's aide and a keynote message from California Congressman Ted Lieu, and it was a wonderful networking opportunity and a time to learn from other elected officials from where we could compare and collaborate on common issues in our communities and also in the AAPI neighborhoods from Massachusetts to Virginia. I was very proud to represent the Brandywine School District and make a stronger connection with fellow AAPI trustees from the Christina School District, Mr. Yanfei Liu and Naveen Bakhir. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the update. Sounds like a wonderful opportunity. Thank you for sharing. Any other comments, updates? If not, I'll just take this time, like to take a minute to recognize Ms. Karen Gordon. It is with great reluctance that I have accepted her resignation as a board member, but I wanted to thank her for her years of service, not only for this board, but she was a twenty-seven-year employee of the Brandywine School District, former president of the BEA Union. She brought a balanced view, seeing both sides from the classroom and as a board member and as a citizen. And I know personally in my time on the board, she's been a wonderful listening ear and a calming voice when I needed it most. When I had a tendency to go down a rabbit hole, she was always there to listen and bring me back. So thank you, Karen. You will be missed. We'll be counting on your support to help us out come referendum time. And certainly, our door is always open. We hope you'll come back and visit and join us. We're here every third Monday.
And I promise to be back.
And we do have a little, just a little.
Just let me say, I promised to miss you all.
So we will, Ms. Gordon's resignation effective August first. We'll gather the information for the policies and procedures to fill that vacancy, and we'll post those in accordance with those regulations in a timely manner. All right. With that, moving on for, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Stock, second, Mr. Ackerman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the monthly personnel report as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Stock, second, Mr. Ackerman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion to approve student matters as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Ackerman, second, Ms. Gordon. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Old Business, Mr. Holer, Social Media Litigation.
At the last meeting, we reviewed the retainer language around the social media litigation. It was asked, or I shared, that our legal counsel, Mr. Jim McMcKinnon, had reviewed and had suggested an edit to the language. Mr. Ackerman asked that we pursue and get a copy of the revised retainer with Mr. McMcKinnon's addendum before going forward and seeking the board's approval or rejection of moving forward with the litigation. Now, just a reminder that we participated in a similar litigation that was brought forth against the company Juul for vaping. The settlement actually goes to the district and its proactive measures to discourage students from engaging in jeweling and vaping. This litigation is around social media, particularly the company Meta, although others are going to be identified. Things like TikTok, Facebook, other social media things that have had adverse effect on today's youth. So the attached revised retainer is there, and it's the board's pleasure as to vote to engage in the litigation or to forego.
Do we have a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation to proceed with the contingent fee retainer agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, Ms. Stock, second, Reverend Perry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Holer. New Business, ten A, swearing in of returning board members. Anybody didn't know, we had school board elections this past May. If you blinked, you might have missed it. But we have returning members, Mr. Ackerman and Reverend Perry. Mr. Ackerman, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm?
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Delaware.
And the Constitution of the State of Delaware.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of school board member according to the best of my ability.
Of school board member according to the best of my ability.
And I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
Offered or promised to pay.
Offered or promised to pay.
Contributed or offered to a or promised to contribute.
Contributed or offered to or promised to contribute.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
As consideration or reward.
As consideration or reward.
For giving or withholding a vote.
For giving or withholding a vote.
At the election at which I was selected to said office, so help me God.
At the election at which I was selected, elected to said office, so help me God.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Reverend Perry? Reverend Perry, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm?
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the United, and the Constitution of the State of Delaware.
And the Constitution of the State of Delaware.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of school board member.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of school board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And I do further solemnly swear that I have not directly or indirectly paid.
And I do further solemnly swear affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid.
Offered to, promised to pay, contributed or offered to or promised to contribute.
Offered or promised to pay, contributed or offered to or offered to or promised to contribute.
Any money or other valuable thing as consideration or reward.
Any money or other valuable thing as consideration or reward.
Forgiving or withholding a vote.
Forgiving or withholding a vote.
At the election at which I was elected to said office.
A vote at the election at which I was elected to said office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Word to know that can be tricky at times. With that, item ten B, election of board officers, I will turn the gavel over to our superintendent, Mr. Holer.
Nominations are now in order for the Office of President.
I would like to nominate our current president, John Scrobot.
I'll second that.
Mr. Scrobot has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, I'll ask Mr. Scrobot if he accepts the nomination.
I humbly accept that nomination.
Mr. Scrobot, hearing no other nominations, you are thus elected by acclamation. Congratulations on being president of the Brandywine School Board for the next year.
Thank you, Mr. Holer, and thank you, members of the board, for your trust in me. Appreciate it.
Nominations are now open for the Office of Vice President.
I would like to nominate our current vice president, Jason Helen.
I would second that nomination.
Nomination has been made and seconded. Are there other nominations? Hearing none. Mr. Heller, you are elected by acclamation as vice president of the Brandywine School Board for the next school year. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Holer. Moving on, new business, ten C, draft of First Amendment to establish the Wilmington Learning Collaborative, and any other updates for the Wilmington Learning Collaborative, Reverend Perry?
Wilmington Learning Collaborative met on June the fifteenth, where we, our main item on our agenda was to vote on our executive director, Dr. Laura Burgos. We also discussed the details of our contract to which the board empowered me to enter into negotiations at that time. We also changed our meeting date from a biweekly meeting to every third Tuesday of the month, so we will meet tomorrow on July the eighteenth. At that time, we also discussed, the Wilmington Learning Collaborative had several number, several items that we were responsible for completing during the first year, which was our planning year that was outlined in the MOU. Those being, but not limited to, the governing, the appointment of the board, the hiring, search and hiring of the executive director, conducting a needs assessment and root cause analysis, the executive director building out the WLC team, creating the ELTs and community councils, creating school plans, and engaging with educators and school staff, parents and guardians, students and community members. What we discovered was that because the board, the full council was not seated until February, February the ninth, I believe, was the exact date, it was impossible to permit the executive director to be onboarded and to give her or him at that time an entire year. and to give her or him at that time an entire year to complete the aforementioned assignments. And so therefore, as a council, we are asking for us to revisit the MOU and asking for an extension of the planning year to ensure that the Executive Director, once she is onboarded, that she will have an entire year to do her due diligence to complete the tasks that are before her. And with that said, I do want to add a caveat in that extending the timeline does not hinder the work that we are currently doing. We are just asking for a little more time once she is onboarded. Again, we will vote tomorrow to officially make an offer to her so that she can start on Wednesday. Hopefully, all goes well in that. And so her official start date will be July the 19th, and that will commence her year of planning to complete the needs assessments, building the teams, connecting with the community, and so forth. And so this is a first read. For the board specifically, I would call your attention to section 8.1, and you will notice the change in the verbiage that is highlighted in bold. Planning years, instead of 2022 to 2023, it should read to... And we're adding, excuse me, 2023 to 2024 school years. We'll be planning periods with additional support. This is an addition and the initial phase for implementing incentives, initiatives, excuse me, policies and programs by the WLC. The WLC will, as soon as possible, reasonably, as soon as reasonably practical, excuse me, conduct a search and hire the Executive Director, which we did. And then after the Executive Director's appointment, the WLC will conduct an open and honest needs assessment, and the verbiage remains the same. Would also call your attention to section 3.2 of the MOU entitled Governing Council. There's some specific language concerning voting members and ensuring that we are clear about the voting members. In addition to language concerning once vacancies occur, for example, we had a student representative graduate this year, so Christina would now be responsible for replacing their student representative in addition to the Red Clay School Board Representative retired from her seat. And so we, Red Clay, would now appoint her replacement. And so that language is outlined in the revisions of the MOU. Other than that, the other changes are dates just to coincide with the extended planning year. Again, this is a first read, no action is being asked to take place tonight. Other than if you have any questions or comments, please feel free to contact me directly or feel free to respond at this time.
Can I share just... I think it was just an oversight in the editing on page four, which is under number two, where it says in parentheses, "The planning year and the first year of implementation."
I'm sorry, what page is that?
It's page four of the document. Second line says in parentheses, "The planning year and the first year of implementation." I think that doesn't apply anymore for adding a second planning year, so I think it was just missed in the updates. Since there's two planning years now, so those two years wouldn't cover the first year of implementation.
Page four? Yes. Thank you. Another typo was... Page one, the third, whereas it says section, it refers to section five. It actually should say section eight, which is the... In the original MOU, the planning year is outlined in section eight, not section five.
So hopefully, we'll get a revised copy and supply it in Board Docs, and we'll also have that revised copy uploaded for the August meeting as a revised draft. Mr. President, I would just like to say thank you to Reverend Perry for her leadership in getting the WLC off the ground where we are today. I'm 100% in favor of the revised MOU. I think we and others, while we knew it was going to be a heavy lift, we didn't anticipate just how heavy of a lift it is. This isn't extending an established organization. This is creating a new organization from the ground up. And the work by volunteers from the three districts has just been amazing. But it's also taken leadership to corral that work, and Reverend Perry, as you know, serves as the reigning President of the WLC and has been a driving force behind that work. So on behalf of Brandywine, thank you, Reverend Perry.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the board on that? Or as Reverend Perry said, any questions, reach out. Otherwise, we'll get the revised draft, and that'll be on the August agenda. Moving on to general information and meeting dates. July 26th, we have our Board Retreat at Rockwood, followed by our regular August Board Meeting on the 21st here at Brandywine High School, regular September meeting, September 18th here at Brandywine High School, and our regular October meeting, October 16th at Brandywine High School. Any final comments or questions from the board?
Just one. Again, thank you, President Scrobout, for acknowledging Ms. Gordon for her service to the district, not only as a teacher, but as a Board Member for many years. We will be inviting Ms. Gordon back to recognize her once she is formally retired from the position at either the August or September Board Meeting in a special recognition. So looking forward to that opportunity. Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
Thank you.
That'll be well-deserved recognition. Thank you, Mr. Holer. Hearing no other comments or questions, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
Motion, Ms. Stock, second, Mr. Heller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your time and participation this evening. We are adjourned. See you next month.